Good evening.
Yeah, well, we had, last month, we started a web streaming, you know, where you can watch the meeting live on the web, and they updated the, um, the software. So this is the first time that we've used the live software.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, when you click record from this one street, they call the C-4. Yep. Yeah. 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 No, no, just leave them roll call. He's Marcus present, so, um, when you do the voting, it's passion. Marcus, they decide to use. Every time, for people, every day, every period, um, yeah. Think of motion, okay, this is my motion. Yeah. Think of my motion. All of them have options. Yeah, but when you click record, it's a little bit of ground for yourself. Yeah. And then you notice that, well, we can set the agenda to them, to move down there. Okay. You don't need to time stamp it. Just when he starts reading, he's like, oh, all right, we're back, we took that comment, and he goes through his field, and then soon as he says, I'm gonna send it to Jen, yeah, or whatever, he sets it from scratch until we click that. Okay, so then here's your talents on the ball. Okay, so that's, so you're just going to go here now for the next one, okay? Go with the whole name. Okay, now, how do we do that? We open, log on to Granite Valley, and then you didn't start the meeting first. That was the trick. You skipped. You started the meeting before you opened. Yeah. Well, even launch the live management, you know, log on, launch, then click the whole code. You log in, start the meeting, that's right, start. And it would work. Follow the notes. Follow the notes. Follow my notes. Well, I knew you'd be nervous, you know, actually glad I fixed that before we got... Yeah, yeah.
The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order, and we will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as advisory board to the city council. It is a responsibility of the planning commission to consider and make recommendation on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permits and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plans or future land use amendment requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on rezoning requests, major amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The planning commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the planning commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the City 2015 Land Use Plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the planning commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the planning commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and pager. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good evening, and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. I am filling in this evening for Commission Chair Kent Metzger, and I call this, to order this regular meeting of the City Planning Commission, and will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the city council. It is the responsibility of the planning commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Any final action on conditional use permit or minor amendment requests taken here tonight are final unless appealed to the city council. Any final action taken here tonight on preliminary subdivision plans will be referred to the city council for their public hearing on October 15, 2007, at 7:00 PM. Any final action on zoning requests, major amendments, or ordinance amendments taken here tonight will be referred to the city council for their public hearing on Monday, November 5, at 7:00 PM. Council meetings are held here in the Carnegie Town Hall, and these meetings, public hearings are also televised. Any final action taken here tonight on a final development plan for a planned development district is final. At this time, the planning commission will approve the consent agenda and the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the planning commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the City's 2015 Land Use Plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request, and the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. To begin, I will read the consent agenda. Number one would be the approval of the September 5, 2007 minutes of the regular meeting. Number two would be approval of Platts. Number three would be item 2007-06-31, a rezone from Ag Agricultural District to the old Office District to allow office development at West 77th Street and South Minnesota Avenue. Item number four is item 2007-8-34, a rezone RD Residential District to 41st Street, 10 PD Planned Development District, Subarea A for development of townhomes located at West 41st Street and South Grinnell Avenue. Item number five, item 2007-09-12, a rezone from AG Agricultural District to Shadow Creek Plan Development District to allow sports and medical uses. This is located at the northeast corner of 73rd Street and South Cliff Avenue, the future 73rd Street. Item number six is a major amendment, petition number 2007-90904 to Chapter 15-45-070, Planned Development Districts, Subarea 1, Beetle Greenway PD, allowing changes in land use as reflected in the revised subarea regulations, and amended, amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls at East 14th Street. That is, yes, at East 14th Street. Item number seven, petition number 2007-09-09, conditional use permit in the C3 Commercial Business District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment as an accessory use to a restaurant at 309 South Phillips Avenue. Item number eight, petition number 2007-09-02, final development plan in Subarea W, Platinum Valley Plan Development District to allow construction of fourplexes at West 93rd Street and Hughes Avenue. And finally, item nine, petition number 2007-09-03, a final development plan in Subarea D, North Ridge Planned Development District to allow construction of a 48 multifamily dwellings at 2007 North Carrier Avenue. Are there any objections from the audience to any item listed on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, Shauna Goldammer, representing planning staff this evening. We have received phone calls of opposition to item number nine on the consent agenda. Neighboring property owners would like the opportunity to put in public testimony tonight, so we'd ask that item nine be moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Good, thank you. Are there any other objections to the items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, are there any objections from the commission to the items and the comments made by staff regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of the consent agenda, amending it to move item nine to the regular agenda.
I second.
You have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda with the one modification, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Okay, the consent agenda has been approved. Those of you that had items on the consent agenda tonight are free to go, or you could stay. We have a few more pieces of business. That having been said, I will go through the regular agenda, and we'll get that approved and move forward here. Number 10, item number 10, is a resolution amending the future land use map as part of the Sioux Falls 2015 Growth Management Plan, petition number 2007-08-16 at Northwest Corner, Benson Road, Marion Road, from the single-family residential, multifamily residential land uses to an allocation of commercial office, institutional, multifamily, and single-family residential future land uses. Item number 11 is an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls rezoning property at North Dubuque Avenue and East 6th Street from the AG Agricultural District to the RS2 Residential District, the RC Recreational Conservation District, and the Wild Meadows Planned Development District, petition number 2007-08-11, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Item number 12 is a major amendment, petition number 2007-09-08 to Chapter 15.45.070, Planned Development Districts in Subarea A and B at Heather Ridge 2 Planned Development District, allowing changes in land uses reflected in the revised subarea regulations, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls at Western Avenue and South Grand Arbor Court. Item 13, petition number 2007-09-05, is a conditional use permit in S Institutional District to allow official or office use for Bright Start Home Visiting Nurses at 42, 4402 East 3rd Street. Item 14 is petition number 2007-09-13, conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle display and sales at 4201 East 10th Street. Item 15 is a final development plan, petition number 2007-08-22, in Subarea C of Air McKenna Plan Development District to allow construction of an extended stay hotel at South 7th Avenue and East 24th Street. Item 16 is petition 2007-09-07, a final development plan in Subarea E, Granite Valley PD, Planned Development District to construct a manufacturing building at East Dyke Road and North Subert Avenue. Item 17 is a resolution of the City of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Wild Meadows addition, a residential subdivision at East Madison and North Dubuque Avenue. And item 18 is an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending Appendix B, the zoning ordinance by adding land uses to the neighborhood commercial zoning district. Item 19 tonight is adjournment. Are there, is there anyone from the audience that would like to change anything regarding the regular agenda tonight?
Mr. Chair, excuse me, the applicant for item number 16, the final development plan in Granite Valley PD, has requested a 30-day deferral, so staff asks that 16 is deferred until the November meeting.
Good.
Yes.
Are there any changes that the commission would like to make regarding the regular agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the regular agenda?
I'll move to approve the regular agenda with item nine moved from consent into the regular agenda and item 16 deferred.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion regarding the amended agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of the regular agenda signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, as a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we would ask that you also turn off or silence your cellphones. And of course, this meeting is being televised on Channel 16, and we thank you for your cooperation. And staff, would you come forward, make the staff report for item number nine?
Yes. Item nine is a final development plan in Subarea D, North Ridge Planned Development District, to allow construction of 48 multifamily dwelling units. The applicant is proposing to construct an apartment that has 48 dwelling units. The North Ridge Planned Development District was created in 1998. However, this is the first final development plan request within this planned development district. Single-family residential is developing in the area, which does not require a final development plan or a public hearing before this body. The site location is on the west side of North Carrier, approximately one-quarter mile north of West Maple Street. Access is from the driveway, which will extend from Carrier, and then extend in a northwesterly manner. The North Ridge Plan Development, or excuse me, the North Ridge Preliminary Subdivision Plan was approved in 2004 for street alignment and lot and block layout. For parking and parking providing, provided on the site plan, the plan requires 72 spaces indicated on the unit mix, that is, how many one and two-bedroom apartments there are within the structure. The plan does reflect 107 surface parking spaces and 65 underground spaces, so they have plenty of parking. Landscaping includes turf grass with 32 trees, and those are indicated on a landscaping plan provided. The type of structure is a three-story, 48-unit apartment building. Exterior wall materials include horizontal handy plank siding with split-face block wainscote. The roof is pitched and has asphalt shingles. The 16 points included in your packets indicate that the final development plan is a complete application. Because the application provides the opportunity for public input as to the site design, staff does recommend approval of the final development plan with one stipulation, and that sidewalks are required in all public streets. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Shauna. Any questions for Shauna?
Mr. Chair, I have a question regarding the part about zoning purpose and history. This particular piece of land was turned into a PD in 1988, is that what I, or 1980, 1998, is that what I understand?
Correct, 1998.
So this has been a PD since that time?
Correct, and the land use, that is multifamily land use, has been allowed since then.
Right.
For nearly 10 years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shauna. Is the petitioner here?
Dale Janz, 300 North Phillips Avenue. I think Shauna pretty well explained what the project is. When we purchased that property about six months ago, that's what we were told it was intended to be used for, was multifamily, and so we've met all the requirements, made all the smittles to the city. I think there was a question at one point in time whether or not this property would have access to the residential street on the west. It does not. The access is off of Carrier, and all the issues with drainage and everything else have been addressed with the city, so just here to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Dale?
Mr. Chair, Dale, it indicates you've got a dedicated drainage channel along what I think would be the south edge of that. How wide a channel is that?
I can't give you an exact dimension, but that's been there for quite some time. I'm gonna say it's probably 50 feet wide.
Thank you, Dale.
So that is not just for this piece of property, that also handles water from some property east of Carrier?
Correct.
Any other questions for Dale? Thank you, Dale. Okay, anybody from the audience at this time come forward to address item nine? State your name and your address, please.
Good evening, my name is Deborah Mulholland. My address is 4508 West Pat Street. Some of my, myself included, and some of the other single-home residents in the area were quite concerned that a driveway was going to be constructed despite what plans may have already been in because of the fact that the traffic, the extreme heavy flow of traffic and trucks that are constantly putting our children's lives in danger every day. They come in off of Carrier on Pat Street, and they follow Pat Street, which is all, it's single homes on one side of the street, the other side has yet to be developed, down to Vincent Street along those single homes. There are four homes, and there are eight children between those four homes. Just, just between what's on Pat Street and the first home that you come to on Vincent, before these trucks enter this drive that they're making through Vincent, up along the rear, no, behind, if you go up, and they're going up through the property in the back. And so, of course, because there's this made driveway from all of the traffic, and I'm not talking about just 10 trucks a day, it's all day long, because they're not using any entrance on and off of Carrier. We're, of course, as residents, we're going, no, look, they've made a driveway. They're driving it, they're using it, and they're coming through these single-family homes all day long instead of just going in off of Carrier. So I don't understand if they're planning to make a driveway on Carrier, why they haven't done that, and why they aren't using that instead of putting the children in danger. We're talking about the huge trucks with those tunnel-type pipes. It, you know, it looks like they're moving a small version of the Holland Tunnel, which we know they need to do, but why come through the single homes instead of just going in off of Carrier? I realize it's paved, but you have to tell the people not to do that. So that's why we're, we are concerned, and we were not given seven days' notice for this final meeting. We were only, it was only posted on the 28th, which is only six days. So a lot of the residents were concerned that we had no idea what was going on. A lot of us have just purchased in the area and have just moved to this area and are learning about this, and not even giving enough time for us to group together as residents to be able to talk with the Janz Corporation, saying, you know, could you guys go in off Carrier? If you're not, otherwise, are you making a driveway here, and can we talk about it? That's what it looks like to us. Thank you.
So your primary concern is the traffic and whether or not there will be any connection to Vincent?
Right. Our primary concern is, our two concerns are that there be, that the traffic for the apartments and, and that come in and exit onto Carrier, that they enter and exit onto Carrier, that there's no through traffic into the single-family homes. We would have issue because if you see, there's, later on, there's a future planning for a future drive and future parking and future buildings, so there are more dwellings yet to be constructed here. What we unders, what we understood is that there's, you know, there's easily parking, if we were told correct, there's easy parking for approximately 300. We don't want 300 cars coming through a single-family residential area, scooting out and blocking any bus traffic that comes to pick up the children.
Any, any questions of the commission for Deborah?
Deborah, I believe, from talking to the petitioner, I believe the only entrance and exit is gonna be on Carrier. Kinda sounds like those might-be cement trucks that you see going up and down your street.
No, Ken, we're used to seeing the United concrete truck, the big, huge concrete truck. We're used to seeing those. In fact, they just came, and, and we had a, we're having a shed built, so, which we did our building permit for, but we're used to it because it is still developing as far as our area. They're still building the single-family homes there daily. We're used to the concrete trucks. We're not used to trucks that are carrying panels. They look like preformed concrete panels that are as high as this initial ceiling. These are the trucks that are coming in the single-family development. We're talking about those enormous prefab concrete tunnels, portions of that. This is what's coming through. If, if a, if a car was parked on, if a car was parked on either side of Pat Street, these trucks will continue to squeeze on through, and they may take somebody's mirror, doorknob, bumper with them. I just think that it's about time that Janz Corporation, you know, put the driveways in to go off of Carrier.
Any other questions of Deborah? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It might make sense, Dale, for you to come up and address some of the concerns regarding access and...
Yeah, I think, as was stated earlier, the only access point from a permanent standpoint is off of Career. There is probably some temporary construction traffic that comes in on that street because that's the closest access point. Career, the access point there, is under construction, and as soon as that is completed, as soon as the paving is done, utility work's been completed, and that's the next thing is to do the paving. As soon as that's done, that's where all the traffic access will be. So that's a relatively short timeframe that there will be any temporary construction.
Ken, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Dale, when you do Phase Two of this, or the south portion of this, is the intention then still to have that same entrance and exit?
Correct.
For both phases out on Career only?
Yep.
Thank you.
Dale, you're saying short-term. Where are you, four weeks, 10 weeks?
I would say less than four weeks.
Okay.
Depends on what the weather does to us, but conceivably two weeks.
I assume that the materials she's talking about are manholes or culvert sections, precast culverts?
There's two possibilities. The floor system over the parking garage is precast double Ts, so it could be that, or it could be culvert sections for the driveways that we're putting over that drainage dish.
Any other questions for Dale?
I just have one more. Dale, is there any way currently they can access your property without going through this residential area?
It would be pretty difficult until we get that street put in. We obviously can't drive through that street while it's under construction, but as soon as that's in, that's where the access will be.
Okay.
And we can certainly try to limit, you know, any big traffic, but they've got to be able to get those trucks in, and when that's under construction, it's pretty difficult to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dale? Thank you, Dale. Anyone else from the audience care to address this item? Hearing none, commission action?
I'll move for approval with, for item nine with the one stipulation. A second?
We have a motion and a second for approval of the final development plan with the single stipulation. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, next item on the regular agenda will be item 10. Staff, report, please.
Good evening. My name is Steve Randolph. I'll be representing the staff on this item and other items tonight. The Future Land Use Amendment applicants and owners are represented by Steve Van Busker Hazelstein Partners. It's 156-acre site, and it's currently agricultural. In future land use amendments, we're amending the Conferency Plan for the City of Sioux Falls' future land use. There are five items addressed in the application form. Those are indicated in your staff report. Briefly summarize the petitioner's, excuse me, information that's provided. Petitioner states that it's consistent land use with higher-traffic roadways of Benson and Marion Road, and is conforming to access standards proposed by the City of Sioux Falls. Both Benson and Marion Road are arterial roadways, and therefore access is limited. The applicant is prepared to present to you a mix of land uses that would be appropriate on the property. Our current land use designations limit the number of uses that can be indicated on the plan, but I believe the petitioner would like to talk to you about a mix of land uses. Applicant has stated that market conditions are determining the need for these land uses, and they should facilitate a larger need of the community as well. Applicant states that consistent growth is mandated by the ordinances that they will be in compliance with, and that they are addressing arterial roadways, access points, limited subdivision connectivity, land use transitions, and community connectivity all at the same time. I believe they're looking at a definition of what they call an employment center. The employment center is not currently defined in the ordinance. They are proposing, again, this as a mix of land uses in response to market demand. The introduction of the university center into this area and large employment centers will need the support of neighborhood commercial. Therefore, commercial is being added to the plan. The applicant should be prepared to discuss the types of commercial that they see within their development. Applicant states that it's consistent with using existing facilities to carry out subdivision plans. Traffic and utility studies may be required to determine the capacity of existing infrastructure to support proposed land uses, as well as feasibility of increasing capacity if needed. And this can be addressed in the subdivision planning and zoning that is a process that's yet to come. There is a summary in your information of the land uses. Basically, what we have out there now in the current plan is 150 acres of single-family residential and 6.7 acres of multifamily residential. The applicant is proposing to reduce the single-family residential to 73 acres, increase multifamily to 23.8 acres, and add 15 and 1/2 acres of office institutional uses and 40.8 acres of what would be a mix of uses, including commercial. Because the application accommodates future land uses and proposed developments would be consistent with the physical characteristics of surrounding neighborhoods, staff is recommending approval of the Future Land Use Amendment and encourages the applicant to address your comments as well as staff regarding land use transitions and the infrastructure required to support such a large-scale development. Rezoning and subdivision petitions will more closely address those issues. Staff has not received any calls on this application, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, I have a question regarding the terminology of employment centers, and I've read the analysis there. What would, what would an employment center look like?
Well, it is a mix of retail, office, and residential-type uses so that the people living in the area could also work there and do their shopping, and becomes a mixed use in a true sense, that probably the appropriate zoning for that would be plan development.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Steve, the two streets that this property borders, would they be considered minor or major arterial roadways?
These are section-lined roads. I believe they would be major arterials. Major.
Thank you.
That's, thus the limited access.
Any other questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here?
Good evening. Steve Van Busker, 5101 South Nevada Avenue. Thanks for having me tonight. Kind of go through a few more details, I guess, in what our plan is up here. We bought this property in the spring, and once we got up on top of it and looked over the city and just realized how nice of our property it is, we really wanted to try to, you know, do a nice blend of a development on this whole property. You know, one thing that we've had success with down at the Bridges Project, down at 57th and Western, kind of seen a mixed-use facility. You know, it's actually a little bit on the small side in the sense that we couldn't incorporate some of the, you know, the multifamily. We had one twin-home development, I think it was 16 units, you know, back there in the corner, but we'd like to continue on with that. We've had good success down there. We like what we saw. This plan, this concept plan that you see in front of you, kind of fell out of that. You know, we've got, you're asking, Ken's asking about, you know, are these are major arterials or minors? You know, they're, they're major arterials, and the new access standards are going to be quarter-mile access to these two streets. And that's where you see the marks there in the red. You know, that's where we're going to get in and out of this project. So that was kind of our starting point, and then the half-mile, the half-mile lines are going to be the new access points. You know, the whole idea here is that 300 by 300 corner is, you know, the thing of the past. You know, you guys approved a lot of those over the years, but, you know, that's, we're moving into a new era of higher-speed roadways on the section lines, limited access, and keep the traffic moving. So as we look, we looked at those things, the, you know, the land and, you know, those limited access points and some of the other topography issues, and just the area in general, we think that there's a real opportunity out here to, you know, really develop the neighborhood. You know, I've heard it more as neighborhood commercial than employment center, I guess, but, you know, we, you know, there's a lot of housing out there. It hasn't really, you know, totally taken off like some areas of town, you know, but what we're, what we want to do is try to encourage the whole package, and you almost have to do that on your own property now because these higher-speed roadways, you're not going to have pedestrian traffic going across Marion Road. It's just not going to happen. So what we want to do is down there in the corner, which we're showing is commercial because that's the way, you can't show it as mixed use, as we talked about that, you just can't show it because the way the ordinance is written to modify the 2015 plan, that's why it's a big red C4 corner, because that's what you have to do at this point. You know, but if we have that mixed use down there in the corner, if you look at the concept plan, you know, people can live up on the hill, they can live in the apartments, which is going to be kitty corner across from that, you know, the university center, which we think is a big opportunity for a lot of people living. You know, but they can, you know, go down to the corner, and they can shop there, they can work there, you know, people will be living down there. So we're going to mix all that, all those things together. A plan development is where we're heading for that mixed-use corner where the red is at, but, you know, we just, that's the next step. You know, that's next month, I'll be back talking about the same thing. So, you know, so that's, that's kind of the general concept where we came from. Couple things, you know, you can see, actually, on that drawing also, there's a big dark line kind of following the orange there. There's a pretty major drainage way. We're working with a developer to the north to maybe do the detention cell that'll service both of us because we're, there's a pipe going underneath Marion Road there, and, you know, it's a natural spot, and if he drove out there, actually, you can see in the area a little bit, too, you can see the waterway in that aerial. You know, we can incorporate that detention cell into our design rather than having, you know, the traditional detention, square detention cell that doesn't really look like a lot. So we want to try and incorporate that in and manipulate that and make it into a feature rather than just detention. And we've got the same condition if you go back to the, yeah, there's the waterway right there. If you go back to the color map, the amendment map, we've got that purple. The reason that doesn't go straight through is because there's a detention cell needed in our southwest corner out there. You know, so the roadway system, if you look at the concept map, yeah, right there, that's why it does a bend to the north, because we're going to have detention cell there also. You know, we've, I think that's kind of the general plans. We've actually worked on the subdivision plan a little bit today. We're actually looking at taking 54 Street North, which is our northern boundary. We've been working closely with the other developer to the north, and I think we're going to bring back, or we will be bringing back a plan to run 54 Street North into a T-intersection so that first road closest to Marion Road will go north and south, and we'll, what we're trying to do is, you know, essentially, it's a traffic calming device not to, you know, let that traffic into the subdivision so that, you know, the people can come down the hill to go to the...
Steve, you're probably getting into too much detail for Future Land Use Amendment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We appreciate what it appears you're attempting to do here, and if it's okay, I'll ask the commission for questions.
Absolutely.
If you'll stay up here for a minute. Any questions of Steve regarding the land use amendment?
Mr. Chair, I do have a quick question. So, so understanding that employment centers aren't part of our current definition, you're talking about the area that's now designated as red, as commercial, is that, that's what you're calling an employment center, or what we hope to call someday an employment center? That's the area that you're designating for that?
Right, and it's a mixed use, correct.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a mixed-use facility generally that, you know, you've been hearing about it, the 50% commercial, 30% office, 20% multi, you know, multifamily residential, so that mix.
In town, would the Bridges be the closest thing that we have to an employment center concept, or is there anything else that is close to that mix? Because the Bridges Center doesn't quite get there in terms of the residential mix, but is that kind of close?
That, not for residential mix. I mean, we've got 22 acres down there, and I think there's maybe 2 and 1/2 acres of, you know, residential, you know, down there, you know, and then we wish we had more because it kind of gives you that baseline of people, you know, shopping and hanging around and the activities, so we wish, we wish we'd have had more down there.
So maybe it's more a question for staff. Do we have anything that currently sort of is near that employment center definition?
No, we do not. But if you look at the map that's up there, if you look at the northeast corner versus the northwest corner, it's the same concept. If you look at that northeast corner, you see there's a little red commercial corner there, and there's some office, there's some apartments, there's some single family.
Okay.
It has the same traffic pattern where you see the loop road that goes in a circle, so you've got the half-moon.
Yep.
They're going to do the same type of development. We're just not going to paint the developers into the box and say, you have to build into this polygon and this polygon and this polygon. The numbers are still generally going to be the same as that northeast corner. But do they have to put the commercial in that corner, or they, can they move it to the middle and maybe put the apartments in the corner, the office? That's what they'll decide to do as they develop it and bring their zoning in.
Okay.
But the land use stage, we don't need to see that.
Sure. Thank you.
Say, Jeff, please. Looking at that red square across the street to the east.
Yes.
Is that a street going into that development?
No, that's a 300 by 300-foot square, corner that never got built.
So that road is not there?
There's not.
Their first entry into that is back a quarter mile.
Is the one that Shawna just drove. That's the first road. And there's a drainage way, and there's not a road to that commercial or that office.
How would you access that commercial?
You can't. You go, if they tried to develop it, you'd go up through the single-family neighborhood and the lady left, or you'd have them driving through the residential neighborhood back to that commercial, which we are opposed to. So we'd rather them not do that and try to come up with a mixed-use employment center.
Well, it's not Steve's deal, but I just happened to notice that.
We've noticed it a long time.
Thank you, Jeff.
Any other questions for Steve?
Steve, I was glad to hear you say that this 40 acres, although it's a land use designation, is not 40 acres of pure commercial property.
No.
I hope that's been explained to everybody well.
Yeah, that's all of our discussions. You know, we're looking for that mixed use. We're just not sure how it's all going to blend together in the final product, but that's, those kind of percentages is what the discussions have been.
I think this is really the first time, Ken, that in the recent past where we've seen these large blocks of commercial based on today's land use plan with the restricted access, where someone's actually talking about a concept that responds to those very, I guess, challenges or opportunities. So I hope that you'll work with somebody with a lot of talent to put this together because it has the potential to be the first employment center that actually responds to the things that we've been discussing with a lot of developers in the last six months. Anything else for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Is there anybody else in the audience that would care to address this item tonight? Hearing none, I would entertain commission action, item 10.
Mr. Chair, I will recommend approval of item number 10, the Future Land Use Amendment.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the Future Land Use Amendment. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, item 11, staff report.
Item 11 is a rezone from agricultural district to the RS2 Residential, RC Recreation Conservation District, and the Wild Meadows Plan Development District for future residential development and a city park. The purpose and the intent of the RS2 district is to provide areas of residential use with a gross density of generally five to seven dwelling units per acre. The district permits single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, and supportive amenities such as community facilities as parks, playgrounds, schools, libraries, and churches. The application also includes a neighborhood park in the RC Conservation District, and this is to provide open space in natural areas for recreation. The Plan Development District is provided to... The planned development district is provided to increase public review for development projects, and that is also provided. The new planned development district and the zoning regulations associated with the Meadows Plan, or excuse me, Wild Meadows Plan Development District is included in your staff report. The site is located midway between East Sixth Street and East Madison Street, east of Dubuque Avenue. The site is currently generally characterized by rolling hills and undulating terrain. Proximity to schools, parks, churches, and on-sale alcohol establishments includes Washington High School located one-half mile to the southwest. The plan incorporates a neighborhood park. Messiah New Hope Church is located to the west, and there is no on-sale establishments in the proximity. Because the application meets the intent of the comprehensive plan for residential and park development, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning. And that concludes staff report. We will have later on the agenda the preliminary subdivision plan, so we can talk about streets and lots and blocks and layout, that kind of thing. So we'll get into more detail of that later.
Thank you, Shawna. Any questions for Shawna? Thank you. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Good evening, my name is Justin Vanworth, I represent Peripet Sue Companies, 4999 France Avenue South, Suite 248 Minneapolis, Minnesota, 55410. As Shawna had stated, we had changed a couple of things around from last month when we were looking at this item. Based on the 2015 plan, we were set to identify a park location, which we have done on the west edge of the property. We met a couple of different times with planning as well as Parks Department to come up with the most optimal, I guess, location. It's a very flat surface relative to the rest of the terrain that you had seen on the previous topography, which was laid out. What we tried to do there is identify a space that accommodates a large open playing field, a practice field, possibly for baseball or football, something of that nature, as well as, you know, playground equipment and some sort of park shelter. We also went through in, on the southern portion of this property, we had originally called for just a straight RA1 zoning. We have changed that on recommendations from Shawna and planning staff, as well as some of the comments that we received from you all last month. And what we have done is imposed a couple of different building material restrictions as well as imposed a landscaping buffer against the homes on the west edge of that zoning area. That area would include a 50-foot buffer, and then we've also stated that we'll do one evergreen tree at, I believe it was six feet in height, one every 40 feet, to try and create an additional buffer and to somewhat screen that, those homes from whichever type of product we would to put in this multifamily area. I guess other than that, the remainder of the property is single-family residential, and not a lot has changed there with the exception of, I think it's labeled Yankee Circle now, based on the park that we've put there.
Thank you, Justin. Any questions for Justin regarding item 11? Guess not, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would care to address item 11? Seeing none, commission action?
I'll move for approval on item number 11.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the rezone. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Item 11 passes. Item 12, major amendment. The subarea A and B Heather Ridge 2 Plan Development, staff report.
The applicants and owners are represented by Mike Van Buskirk, and it's an 18-acre site, currently vacant, but zoned as the Heather Ridge 2 Plan Development District. The subareas that we're looking at are A and B. The applicant is proposing to adjust the subarea boundaries to reduce the overall density of development in this PD by reducing the size of Subarea B and increasing the size of Subarea A by the same amount. North of the subject property, there is a drainage way in the agricultural district, south it's vacant in a commercial, future commercial district, and RD Residential District. And then to the east, there's a major drainage way in the agricultural district, and to the west, there will be offices in the Boulder Ridge Estates PD Plan Development District. The applicable standards and zoning regulations for Subarea B are RA1 residential and for Subarea ARD residential. Located at the northeast corner of the intersection, this is contained development, a contained subdivision of residential uses by reducing the overall density at this major street intersection. Staff is supporting the concept of altering the subarea boundaries to accomplish that. Secondarily, it does allow the developer of the property, which is a home builder, to use the setback requirements of a lesser-density zoning district. Plans have been provided to indicate to you the site development of each type of unit he proposes to build on the property, including elevations, landscaping setbacks, which are going to exceed the minimum required by approximately two feet. Five feet would be the minimum required, applicant is proposing a typical seven-foot side yard setback. Otherwise, the front and rear yard setbacks are equal to what is the minimum required and exceed that also in many cases. The architectural design is indicated through building elevations, materials are indicated, and that pretty much summarizes the development, the type A twin-home units with a walkout lower level and decks on the main level are located on lots of 1 to 13 block 1, and type B twin-home units with two stories and main-level patios are located on lots 1 to 10 block 2. If you have any questions about the typical site plan development for either one of those unit types, you can ask the developer who is here this evening. Because the application results in a reduction of overall density of this planned development and otherwise concurrence to subarea regulations, staff is recommending approval of the major amendment. We've had no other calls, and that concludes staff report.
Steve, did we see this last month?
We saw last month a request for a minor amendment to the existing subareas to reduce the side yard setback required for the development of the same project. That request was denied on the basis of the planning commission's desire to limit the number of setback reductions coming before then, for that purpose only. Here, the request has been, is being reformulated in the sense that the subarea boundaries are changing to not allow the higher density in the subarea that you wanted the minor amendment for. So it's actually doing a better job of accommodating a lower density. Last time, it was a request for a minor amendment, which minor amendments could have kept coming back to you for other things. This way, we're putting it into an underlying zoning district that should address all of the things that the developer or the home builder is going to run into in the development of those lots. The typical site plans that you see are pretty close, I'm sure, but each and every one of those lots does have to come into the city for a building permit, review and approval. And we know that there are times when the plating and the engineering and the staking and the construction is less than adequately coordinated, and they run into problems. There's less chance of that happening by changing the subarea boundaries to go to conforming to an underlying zoning district that the home builder is comfortable with.
Any questions of Steve?
Mr. Chair, Steve, when I look at one of his floor plans, it shows a deck off to the side. That seven-foot boundary, that deck would have to be off that property line by seven feet.
Decks are allowed to encroach into setbacks by a certain amount, according to the zoning ordinance. For example, in the rear yard, I believe we can, with an upper-level deck, encroach by two feet. You saw one of those applications here last month, I believe.
I think they were asking for two feet, and I think
Oh, they were asking for two feet, and would not be allowed to encroach at an upper level. But on a lower level, a patio or deck on a lower level or main level of a unit is allowed to encroach. And I could get that
Two feet.
I believe it is two feet. I could bear for
I just wanted to be sure that the builder was aware of that.
Yeah. Again, they do have to come in for a building permit application that conforms to the underlying zoning district, and if that's not allowed, it won't be allowed.
Thank you, Steve.
Any other questions for Steve? Steve, is this plan any, truly any less dense than the plan we saw a month ago?
Again, the plan that we saw a month ago is basically the same request for density, but it was trying to fit a lower-density project into what, into a subarea that allows a higher density. By allowing a higher density, that subarea required greater setbacks, and the developer was being penalized for putting in a lower density. By changing the subarea boundaries, again, we're allowing the developer's plan to conform to the lower-density requirements.
So what we did was we just took the same site plan and moved it into a different classification, a different set of rules.
That's correct.
So that really didn't
Hopefully
We're still going to see these units the same distance apart.
Basically, yes. But now, at your request, the developer has provided additional information concerning the design of the units, the site planning of the units, elevations, floor plans, things that you indicated at the last meeting you would like to see in a request of this type.
Anything else for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here?
Mike Van Buskirk, 5101 South Nevada. That's correct, but what, we believe what we're doing here tonight is doing this in the proper manner as far as zoning goes. I think the longer history on this that you should probably all be aware of is, geez, many years ago now, we went, we worked this through with the neighborhood out there, the concern was density in this area, as far as the apartments coming. We're allowed 176 units out there under the present PD that's approved and existing. This plan would take us to 104. The hitch, if you will, that we ran into, and I should say the product that's going to be out there is going to be high-end twin-homes, for-sale units. The setbacks will be the same as this residential Heather Ridge that we've got across the street, and what we ran into is by lowering the density, we ran into setbacks of 10, you know, the 10 feet instead of seven, that's the problem that we ran into. And we understood procedurally wise, this was the way that we should address this. We did have neighborhood meetings on this, there, I believe only four neighbors showed up, I've got the sign-in list there. Everyone was, you know, we had people from both Heather Ridge that weren't there at the very beginning when we started, and people on across the road to the south. There were no objections from the neighborhood at all. Open to questions.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike?
Mike, so you mentioned, these are just like what's up the road, basically?
The setbacks are like what's on across the roads and stuff.
Yeah.
The twin-home product here is actually a step up from what's up the road.
Right.
But these, the builders, the ones in the outer ring will be the same ones what we did in the bridges down there.
Yep.
And a little more of a mix of product, but it'll be nice, high-end twin-homes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to address this item? Commission action?
I'll move for approval of item 12.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the major amendment. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, item 13, conditional use permit in the S Institutional District to allow office use for Bright Start Home Visiting Nurses. Steve?
This is basically an office development. The purpose of the applicant, who is Dennis Dugard, Children's Home Society, is to develop a office space for mental health support staff and administrative staff in an existing building on the Children's Home Society campus. And if you have been out there, it's a nice campus off to the side of the street with its own driveway back in and development around parking and so on. This particular project is located at a corner of the campus and is accessed off the side street across from school. Existing land use is a former foster care residence on the campus. Based on the floor plans provided, minimum off-street parking requirements for the building, which is about 4,000 square feet, is 13 spaces, and the applicant does provide us with a parking lot plan for 20 spaces, including one van accessible if necessary to satisfy the off-street parking requirements. The applicant stated that they are looking into the possibility of using existing campus parking to satisfy the parking needs of this particular project, and perhaps they can address that with you this evening. Otherwise, they do show a plan for parking improvements that would satisfy the zoning requirements, which they are going to have to do for their building permit. Also, the screening of the new parking lot, if it is provided, is required only for adjacent residential uses, and there's only one place where that happens, and it's probably off to the side corner, be the northwest corner of the parking lot, if that's necessary also, would also be coming in with a building permit. Also, with the building permit review, we'd be looking at the landscaping, and they do are required to put in the landscaping that's required for development of street frontage, including one tree for every 50 foot of street frontage, and the screening of the parking lot if they choose to do it that way with landscaping, and also one tree for every six parking spots, whichever is greater. Because the application is compatible with existing uses on campus and is a current development that is actually probably going to reduce the amount of traffic going to it, since the nurses will be coming in and leaving the site for the day and then only coming back to pick up their vehicles, it should be an improvement of traffic situation. And the extent of the work proposed requires a complete plan check by zoning and building services, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit. We've had no calls on that, on this application, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve?
Mr. Chair, Steve, you lost me there for a minute. Are you saying this plan, as they've laid out, is showing 20 parking spots? That's what they intend on doing?
That is what they included in their initial application to us, just to show us that they can meet the parking requirement. They indicated to me during the process of review that they would like to look at the possibility of using other parking on campus to satisfy that requirement. Perhaps they can answer that question tonight.
That looks like a fairly good distance from that parking lot to this particular building.
I asked them to be careful about that, to make sure that the nurses walking back and forth from parking to their office would be okay with that.
So this could be changed by using existing parking lot if this commission felt comfortable with that?
That's correct.
Thank you, Steve.
Any other questions for Steve? Thanks, Steve. Is the petitioner here?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Dennis Dugard, I'm the Executive Director of Children's Home Society, we're 801 North Secamore here in Sioux Falls. As the map indicated, the parcel that we're looking at is on the very southwest corner of our 28 acres. It's an existing building that's been used as a foster home in the past, it's vacant right now. United Way and the state of South Dakota have agreed that we could take over the Bright Start Nurse Visiting Program that's currently operating out of the Department of Health offices, and we would like to do that. A cost-effective method of officing these nurses would be to use our vacant building rather than leasing some office space downtown. We looked at the current zoning after we'd submitted the conditional use permit, and I believe we'd actually qualify under current zoning as a medical office. The occupants of the office would The occupants of the office would be eight visiting nurses, a supervising nurse, a receptionist, and a mental health professional. However, just to be certain that we're, we have our basis covered, we want to go forward with this conditional use permit. I, I must say that the planning staff was very helpful. They did indicate it would be acceptable for me to come and ask for permission to consider using the existing property. If you look at what's showing on the screen right now, this very afternoon, I parked at the lower right-hand corner of that lot and walked to the building, to the north of it. That is what our staff are doing, doing right now. As you can see, the buildings are clustered to the north and west, and most of the parking is to the south and east. And so all of our staff are making that walk every day, summer and winter. What we would hope you might consider allowing us to do is to construct a path from the existing parking to the building, so the nurses would have a direct path to the building. If that's not acceptable, we'll build the parking that's in the submitted plans. The reason why we're hopeful that you might allow us to, to use existing parking is that we don't see this location as a good long-term location for the nurses. We'd eventually like to relocate them back in the downtown central core area where they're a little more centrally located, from which they could visit the expectant mothers to which they're dispatched every day. So this is a good short-term solution for the next year or two, and depending on financing and, and availability of space and whether we can manage the money, we're hoping eventually to move them back downtown. We have visited with the county, just very preliminarily with Hugh Grogan, about the possibility of the new center that just opened up. It does have some raw space. There's some possibility we could get some grant funding to improve the raw space, and maybe we'd get a, a quid pro quo of, of free rent if we could get grant money to improve the space, and the county gets something, and we get something out of that deal. I don't know if that's workable, but that's one solution that we hope to pursue. Other than that, we, if the commission decides we should put in the parking, we'll put it in. Whatever landscaping screening is necessary, we'll do that. We need to plant at least one more tree, a couple trees, three trees. We'll do that, no problem. We routinely plant 10 trees every year at Children's Home, just as a process of gradually foresting that property. And so if you would look at that map 20 years ago, you'd see there are more than 200 trees more than were on that property when we purchased it. I'm sure more than that. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to address you and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions for Dennis?
Mr. Chair, I have one regarding the existing property. If you use the existing parking, would there be a safe route for people to walk? I mean, I don't know what time of day or night that people would have to walk that. It looks like quite a distance.
We would, we would put in a path from the, from the, I guess you'd call it the lower lot, directly to the house, to provide a safe path.
Dennis, isn't there a water drainage area?
Yes, we'd have to put a slight, a small bridge. But some of that area is, is a very shallow drainage. It's, it's literally mowed. It's not a ravine kind of situation. Some of it is, and so the most direct route would require a little bridge.
What, what would you think the distance is?
It's about 370 feet.
So really not any more than they're currently walking if they're going to the north house from this lower parking?
Right. In fact, we have, the upper left, as I'm looking at the picture, is our school, and so our teachers are packed, some of our teachers will sometimes park in the lower lot and walk to the school, which is probably about twice the distance.
I've noticed some of your staff actually walking to the campus, those that live nearby?
Yes, that's right. Shirley Lineback, Rick Weber.
Dennis, could you explain to us the use of this building during the day? Are you saying there's no one, that no one at this building from 8:00 to 5:00?
At present, there is, the building's vacant. If we are allowed to occupy it as we propose, there will be a supervising nurse and a receptionist there. They would probably be in the building more than not during the office hours. The other eight nurses and the mental health professional would be out of the building more often than they're in. In other words, again, the, the program is designed to visit expectant mothers, first-time mothers. The ideal mother is an at-risk mother within the first 28 weeks of pregnancy. She begins the program. The nurse visits, it's a voluntary program. The nurse visits free of charge, counsels against alcohol use, tobacco use, counsels in favor of good nutrition, prenatal visits, aims for a good birth outcome, and then continues the visits, albeit less frequently, until the child turns age three. And so that's where the name Bright Start comes from, and it's a proven model that's copied from Denver, the Denver area, and we're with the state of South Dakota, I guess you might call us a licensee of sorts, use their curriculum and their model. So the nurses would come, drop their car, pick up a pool car, and make these visits. It may be that they wouldn't stop at the office at all, depending on if they have something to do in the office. They may just drop their car at the lot, pick up a pool car at the lot, and then drive away.
Dennis, do any of your clientele ever come to an office like this?
They do. It would be, it would be fairly infrequent, though, because this, again, it's, it's aimed at at-risk moms. We want to make it very convenient for them, and so the model is primarily visits to them in the home. Then the, the nurse can do checkups on the baby or toddler, as the case may be, or checkups on the expectant mom in their home.
What do you envision the use of this building in two years from now? If you guys were to move out?
Thank you for that question. We probably would revert to a residential-type use again. In fact, we're planning on no reconfiguration of the interior whatsoever.
So if we were to consider approving this on a two-year basis, you wouldn't have a problem with that? If we were to allow the parking out there?
That would be fine with me.
I'm not sure how it'd be to everybody else just yet, but.
We should probably, once Dennis, once we've finished the questions with Dennis' staff, but I believe that as a part of this campus, there's probably a parking requirement for the overall campus, and that if that's satisfied, if there's enough parking for the whole campus as is, there's probably no requirement for this additional parking in terms of zoning code.
That's correct. The residential use was a higher use as far as parking requirements go. The office is less, and their particular program is way less. You could either tie it to a timeframe, or you could tie it to this particular program, if you like. If it goes back to residential use, that's an allowed use, and the existing parking is satisfied.
Thank you, Steve. Any more questions?
Do we need a stipulation, Steve, or can we just approve it as it is, since it does fit within the parking plan of the whole complex?
The applicant has indicated they're agreeable to a time limit if you wish to put one in. Otherwise, staff could recommend that you stipulate approval for this program only.
Like we do for a lot of conditional, other conditional use permits.
Then, when the program changes and they go back to an allowed use, the existing parking is satisfied.
Any other questions for Steve? Any other questions for Dennis? Hearing none. Are there, is there a motion regarding the approval of this, or this conditional use permit?
Mr. Chair, I would move for approval of item number 13, not including the required parking, and it would be for this use only.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Thank you. The conditional use permit is approved. Let's move to item 14, which is another conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle display and sales. Thank you.
The location is at 4201 East 10th Street. The applicant is proposing to occupy an existing building and parking lot for display and sales of motor vehicles. This is a vacant property, a former Chapel Hill Funeral Home. No changes are proposed to the site plan or the building, plan on the site. The applicant has provided us with information about signage and landscaping that would be required in order to screen the parking lot from adjacent residential uses. Also, they've indicated adding two parking lot lights on poles, similar to what's there now, but also meeting the lighting standards for downward throw and glare control. Of the 36 available spaces for parking, the applicant has assigned 11 of them to customer employee parking, and the remaining 25 to vehicle display, as required by the current parking requirements for this property. We have a letter in the file that indicates the zoning has approved the amount of 11 spaces as required for the property, as it is now a commercial property. Remaining spaces can be used for display and sales. Again, the applicant has indicated that they will provide the required screening of the parking lot and provide the required number of trees planted in the front yard at the rate of 50, one per 50 foot of frontage, or one per six parking spots, whichever is greater. And they will be provided in the front yard setback required. The other thing that, on the signage that the applicant would address with you this evening, if you wish to ask the question, is the matter of pennants and flags, other devices that are temporary in nature that you might see in a parked car lot. Because of the proximity of residential development to the property, we'd like to see those located away from those residences, and the applicant has agreed to do that. We have indicated as a basis for approval, then two stipulations, as a recommendation from staff, that business signage facing adjacent residential use is prohibited, and then parking lot, or parking of vehicles for sale on the residential street, East 12th, is not allowed. That should address the compatibility of the development with adjacent existing residential uses, and staff is recommending approval on that basis. We haven't had any calls, and that concludes staff report.
Any questions? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here?
Good evening. Brent Antonin with Graham Organization, 5000 South Minnesota, Suite 101, representing Brad Dumdyan Auto Land.
Do you have anything to add, Brent?
I don't. I think Steve covered it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Brent?
Do you have any concerns about the requirement that the signage should stay away from the residential?
Not at all. You know, it, it just so happens that we have a unique property that has two. You know, we're, we're on 12th and 10th, but obviously, we're going to focus all of the efforts to drive sales traffic in from 10th Street. It's, you know, people driving on 12th are typically going home. That kind of thing are going to work, and so putting signage there isn't a big deal to us, anyway.
Any more questions for Brent? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would care to address this item? Seeing none, commission action?
Motion for approval on item number 14 with the two stipulations.
I second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the conditional use permit with the two stipulations. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Item number 15 is the final development plan in Subarea C of Bear McKinnon Plan Development District to allow construction of an extended stay hotel. Staff report, please.
The applicants and owners are represented by Garrett Peters of Bear McKinnon Hospital and University Health Center. Size of the property is 1.4 acres approximately. It's in a existing planned development that allows residential uses to remain as they were rezoned into the PD, and this is a situation where some of those residences have been removed, and they're proposing a new project. Project is an extended stay hotel. The architect has presented plans, floor plans, site plan, landscaping plans. Everything that is required for review of your final development plan is presented here this evening, except for the parking. And we've asked the applicant to address the parking requirements, and later this afternoon, I did receive a plan email that did not get into your addendum. I have it available for the applicant to present to you as a solution to the parking requirement. The applicant is proposing to construct 19 rooms as the extended stay facility. On the subject property, two residence buildings and a welcome center are located on three-quarters of this block. Some existing homes will remain until the future, when the rest of the block would be built out as an expansion of the facility. Vehicle access is proposed from East 23rd Street and from an existing alley running through the side from East 23rd to East 24th. Pedestrian path improvements are shown from buildings to public sidewalks and indicated in all directions. The hospital has provided staff with a summary of parking that's provided on campus, showing an excess of parking available for use on campus, this being a campus use. It could be included, the parking requirements for this project. However, a location for the parking, parking requirements were not included with the campus summary, and so the applicant is going to show that to you this evening, what they're proposing. A total of 17 trees are indicated in the front yards. Based on street frontage, a total of 12 are required, so we've exceeded that. There is a plant material schedule indicating one and three-quarter caliper skyline locust trees being planted. These are single-story residential-style commercial buildings with stucco stone and trim board, residential roof pitch and shingle materials. Building height is not indicated, but appears to be residential and less than 45 feet allowed. Floor plans indicate the number of rooms and facilities supporting. The applicant should be prepared to report any neighborhood comments at this public hearing. Because the application is for an allowed use, design is compatible with residential character of the neighborhood and otherwise conforms to PD subarea regs, staff is recommending approval of the final development plan with one stipulation, parking plan approved by the planning director. Because a parking plan is being presented to you this evening as meeting the requirements, you can keep that same stipulation, or if you have any questions about the plan presented, you may approve it with plan as presented. You have a choice there. And that concludes staff report. I've had no calls from the neighborhood.
Thank you, Steve. Are there questions for Steve?
Steve, Mr. Chair, Steve, not to put you on the spot, but I'm reading here, parking regulations and parking provided hotel or motel parking are five parking spaces plus one space for each room or suite. So are we saying at 19 rooms? We'd multiply that times five, and that would be the parking requirement?
No, no. It's five spaces plus one for each room or suite.
19 and 5, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. An applicant here? Garrett?
I'm Garrett Peters from Bear McKinnon, address 1105 West Deguere Circle. I'm here to address any questions. First off, the parking, I guess, we are looking at the block to the east, the, that picture there, the northwest corner of that block. There's three existing lots that we'll be taking to accommodate the 24 parking that's required.
Any other questions for Garrett?
You're, you're talking about in the next block over up on the corner?
Yes, that's correct. Right across the street, across 8th Avenue.
How will you keep that for the suites only?
It'll be signed as such.
Thank you.
I know we just approved something similar, but this is a residential facility. I know we just approved something similar, but this is a residential facility, more residential than, than what we had at Children's Home Society. And I think at night in the wintertime, I mean, that could be a substantial walk from where you're proposing the parking. Are there any plans where this existing housing is, is at some point to consider getting some parking there, or?
Well, currently, on, on the block that we're doing the development, we do not own the two properties on the, just to the northeast of the building. I guess we, we do own more of the properties to the south of where we're proposing the parking. And in the not-too-distant future, we are planning on developing more of that as parking.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Garrett?
Garrett, I, I, I see where Jesse's coming from. Your actual, your welcome center is actually about a half-block to the east.
Yes.
The property to the, where it says East 23rd, I'm not sure if that's north or south on this map. Is that existing parking lot for the hospital at this, this time?
Um-
To the top of the page there?
On the, yeah, actually, on the whole north side of that, that is all hospital parking.
If I was staying there, I didn't care to park in the parking lot you're going to provide, walk the half-block. Could I park right across the street in a regular parking lot and not get told?
Yes. That is not regular, especially in the evening, which is when these people would be there. It's, it'd be allowed.
Is that Orthopedic Institute?
Yes.
Any more questions? Thank you, Garrett. Is there anyone else in the audience that would care to address this issue? Seeing none. Commission action?
I'll move for approval of item 15 with the one stipulation.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the final development plan with the single stipulation. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Item 16 has been deferred. Item 17 is the preliminary subdivision plan for Wild Meadows Edition. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is proposing to create a residential subdivision which includes a neighborhood park. The site is primarily rectangular with undulating topography. Surrounding subdivisions include Richmond Estates Fourth Edition, Cliff Foss' Second and Fourth Editions, Aspen Hills Edition, and Canterbury Heights Edition. A vicinity map drawn to scale has been provided, as well as notations regarding the legal description stating the acreages. The location of all proposed and existing streets, alleys, and easements, and parks, and watercourses have been provided. There are two power line easements on both the west and east property boundaries, which are depicted on the plan. The comprehensive plan depicts residential development in a neighborhood park. The applicant has indicated a five-acre neighborhood park on the plan. Staff will continue to work with the applicant regarding access to the park from the north. The planning process accommodates reservation of the land for the neighborhood park, and the capital improvement plan will address improvement cost. Because the preliminary subdivision plan does offer coordination of urban infrastructure and fosters efficient orderly growth, staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plan. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Shawna. Any questions for Shawna regarding item 17? Is the petitioner present?
Thank you. Shawna, I guess I have no further comments, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Would you state your name and address again?
Justin Banworth, Parapasu Companies, 4999 France Avenue South, Minneapolis, 55410.
Thank you. Any questions for Justin? I guess not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Is there anyone else in the audience that would care to address this item? Seeing none. Commission action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of item number 17.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary subdivision plan. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Item 18 is an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending Appendix B, the zoning ordinance by adding land uses to the neighborhood commercial zoning district. Shawna?
Thank you.
Staff report.
The planning commission is, has been struggling with the issue regarding retail in neighborhood kind of commercial centers. And should we add retailing into the office district? Staff is going, coming forward with this zoning ordinance amendment to not allow office, or excuse me, commercial land uses in the office district, but resurrecting a, a little-known zoning district that we do have on the books called the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And the Neighborhood Commercial District is to provide commercial and service areas located on the edge of residential developments, primarily to serve areas within one mile of the development. What this ordinance does is allows retail trade and service, except a restaurant, in this zoning district that would allow establishments that are generally engaged in selling products, goods, or merchandise to the general public for personal and household consumption. The ordinance amendment allows for retail trade and service currently not allowed in the C1 district. Staff notes that restaurants are not an acceptable use in the C1 because of negative impacts to surrounding properties due to noise, trash, parking, smells, and hours. Because the application does allow for retailing in a neighborhood-sensitive context, staff does recommend approval of the zoning ordinance amendment. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Shawna regarding this amendment?
Mr. Chair, Shawna, if this particular amendment ordinance had been amended, would that have been an application for the earlier future land use conversation on the corner of Benson Road and Marion? Because I've seen terminology of neighborhood commercial districts.
Although the, the neighborhood commercial district doesn't allow for residential. And so what they were proposing was a component of residential. This actually has setbacks and requirements for yards similar to the office district, but it does currently not allow for retailing. So there is a difference. I, I don't, if your question is, would a C1 be, I think there is an opportunity for portions of that bigger commercial site on the future land use amendment to be C1, but probably not the whole thing.
Right. I was just wondering if that would be a component of that piece that we were looking at.
It certainly could be. And the, the difference with the C1 is that the buildings are smaller because it, it is supposed to attract just the people in the neighborhood, within a mile, not big strip malls or anything like that. The zoning ordinance amendment would allow retailing if the building was less than 3,000 square feet. If it was greater than that, they'd need a conditional use permit.
So Shawna, I think to our situation on Cliff and I think it's Quail Crest or-
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
If, if this would have applied versus an O zoning, that might have opened that up for a little bit different.
I, I don't think those neighbors are supportive of retailing at that, in that case. But I would not be surprised if, if the current owner did try to request this zoning district. I don't know that it's going to fix anything down there.
But in the future, instead of having an O, a but to an RS, we would maybe use this feature.
Right. Exactly. We could use this. Then the expectations of the neighbors would be that there would be a retailing component allowed with bigger setbacks and that kind of stuff if this had been in place-
Sure.
-prior to, you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Why hasn't this been used, Shawna?
That's a good question. I really, I really don't know. I think a lot of the C1 stuff is in older areas that would not accommodate the setbacks that are required, 25-foot setback. The one that I, comes to my mind that's currently in the C1 zoning district is the old Assam Drug Store. And if you tried to put in a 25-foot setback on that property, it wouldn't work because there wouldn't be any area left for parking. But I think in development areas, there's certainly, it could be conducive to providing for some more commerce for neighborhood services.
Shawna, I think in that area, that Quail Run, this wouldn't work on an existing building. It's not the size of the space, it's the size of the total building. I think has to be 5,000 square feet or, or under.
Correct. 5,000 or 3,000.
They do have a vacant piece of ground. They do have a vacant piece of ground up there that something like this could work for, depending on what size building they put on that site.
Right. And if they wanted to do a bigger building, then it would require a conditional use permit, and you can put conditions on there that would make it more neighborhood-sensitive if it was a larger structure.
Thank you.
I, I don't think that I was looking to substitute this, but maybe have this as a addition choice.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah. Yep. I, I was just trying to, in my mind, think of areas that we've had some challenges that it would have served as a better-
And now we have some options.
Yes.
I think this is, this will be especially useful in, because a lot of what we're seeing are these developers coming in with plans for a total little neighborhood, you know, apartments, single-family, and small shopping area. So that's probably going to make that a lot easier.
That's the hope.
Any question, any more questions for Shawna? Shawna, you're also the petitioner this evening. Any more questions? Is there anyone from the audience that would care to address item 18? Seeing none. Commission action.
I'll move for approval of item 18.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the zoning ordinance amendment. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Item 19 is adjournment. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
There's a second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's going to be very interesting to see what the Dan Buskers will do. I hope they can do it. I hope somebody does.